Alderman Win.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes. Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
So, we got a quorum.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, August 6th, meeting of the Evanston City Council. Alderman Fisk is at work, has just left work and will be here shortly. Before citizen comment occurs, I would like to say the following. Citizen comment is an important part of council meetings. We welcome comments from all citizens and we encourage the expression of different opinions and viewpoints. Comments from concerned citizens are another reason that makes the city of Evanston a remarkable place to live. The city's Board of Ethics concluded its independent investigation of the Kendall matter and determined that there was no conflict of interest involved. Pursuant to Council Rule 6-4, that matter is concluded and is beyond the jurisdiction of the council. All further redundant comments made on this subject made by any speaker will be ruled out of order. No further redundant and duplicative comment, such comment has gone on for over seventeen months, will be heard on the Kendall matter at this or any other council meeting. This ruling is in accordance with the council rules, the holding of the U.S. Supreme Court in Perry Education Association versus Perry Local Educators Association and Section 206-G of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Lastly, all speakers should keep in mind that the tone of the comments should be civil. Now we will have citizen comment. I'm going to call the first four speakers. You each have three minutes. Natalie Watson, Cass Wolfe, Shirane Y. Taylor, and Padma Rao.
Good evening, council, and thank you very much for holding this special meeting on pedestrian safety. My name's Natalie Watson. I'm here on behalf of Evanston 150's Walk and Roll. I'm also here on behalf of my two-year-old daughter, Maya, with whom I bike and walk all over Evanston. Walk and Roll, along with Citizens Greener Evanston and Active Transportation, have a wonderful vision of fully walkable and bikeable city. We believe that the era of the private automobile is beginning to decline and we welcome it. Since the 1950s, our cities have been given over to the transport and storage of cars. In just over sixty years, our growing dependence on them has resulted in violent climate change, devastating oil spills and oil wars, and skyrocketing healthcare costs. We continue to destroy our health with obesity-related illnesses like diabetes, heart disease, asthma, and hypertension. And in 2009, there were more than five-and-a-half million car crashes in the United States. More than 2 million people were injured and nearly 31,000 people lost their lives. Policy and design strongly influence our daily choice of transportation. Wide roads, minimum parking requirements, and a streetscape of parking lots and garages, gas stations and drive-thru stores virtually guarantee a population tethered to their cars. And the more allowances we make for private vehicles, the more walkability is destroyed, creating further dependence. And though some will always choose to drive, there are many more of us who would prefer to walk or bike if only our streets didn't feel so hostile. I understand that one of the issues up for debate this year is whether to institute a citywide 25 mile-an-hour speed limit. If it were heated, it would save lives. The likelihood of my being hit by a car declines as drivers slow down because drivers will be able to see me in time to stop. What is more startling is the nonlinear effect of car speed on pedestrian death when a crash does occur. If a car is going 20 miles an hour, only 5% of those struck will die. At 30 miles an hour, it rises to 45%, and at 40 miles an hour, 85% of people will lose their lives. However, drivers tend to fast, tend to drive as fast as they feel plausibly in control, regardless of speed limit. And this new rule doesn't alter the design speed of our streets. Evanston could have great walk appeal. We have beautiful architecture, a canopy of street trees, and ideal density. Yet every one of our major streets are dominated by car traffic, to the detriment of all other users. If we made pedestrian safety and accessibility a top priority, we could achieve our sustainability goals, survive peak oil, and become known as a great walkable city. There are many economic benefits to walkable cities, one being that pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure is cheaper to build and maintain, mainly because you need less of it. And here are some other findings from the Local Government Commission Center on Forlivable Communities. Walkability increases property values. One study found that just a 5 to 10 mile-an-hour reduction in traffic speeds increased nearby property values by 20%. Major firms around the country are advocating for pedestrian and transit-friendly development patterns because they know that walkability attracts the young, knowledge-based workers of the new economy.
Ms. Watson, I need you to wrap up.
Okay.
Thank you.
We urge our city to promote the safety, comfort, and convenience of pedestrians in every transportation planning and design decision. We can ensure that daily destinations are accessible to everyone. We can complete our streets, make walking, biking, and transportation, public transportation more appealing and efficient than driving. We can achieve all three of our goals: economic viability, environmental sustainability, and the strengthening of community. We can become the most livable city in America. Although measures like speed limits and fines, radar displays, and red flags are good short-term medicine, what we really need is a long-term cure. The time has come for all of us to question, question our assumptions about transportation. We can learn to see our streets anew, recognize them as important public spaces belonging to everyone.
Ms. Watson, please.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, and I'm supposed to ask everyone to please give their name and address. Thank you, city clerk, for reminding me. And I do promise you that while we all have different approaches, we are all very concerned with pedestrian safety. And while the results are good from our city staff's hard work on this issue, and my congratulations to them and to Alderman Grover for her work on cellphone bans, and the stats are going in the right direction, we are still very concerned about the issue and that's why we're meeting tonight. But everyone on the council is deeply concerned about pedestrian safety. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. Cass Wolfe. Address, you said? 325 Dewey in Evanston. I am here to take the large conversation of the previous speaker and shrink it to a very specific need, which is I am the executive director of the daycare center in, mentioned on page, I think it was 43, of the recommendation. The daycare center, Infant Welfare Society of Evanston's Baby Toddler Nursery that is on Main Street, 2200. There are no parks on our side of the street. So when our staff want to go to take the children to a park, we have to cross Main Street and walk west over to Harbert Park. That's the closest park to us. We can't walk on the south side of Main Street to get to that park because all of the shopping center entrance and exits and the skinny sidewalks and the have to go here and there and we use buggies, those kinds of things. So we cross the street, but we do it at, with trepidation in our hearts as we do that. Main Street, we've been in operation there forever, 30 years or more, and it's a fast, fast street. I've been aware of the progress and discussion over the years. But I would ask specifically that reconsideration be given to the staff's recommendation around not putting a crosswalk there. We believe that having that crosswalk there where we could use it as we need it, and staff can use it when they park in the evening, you know, when they need to leave in the evening or come in the morning. Our staff don't park in our lot because it's a small lot and we need to make it available to the families. So we have a lot of pedestrian traffic on the street and we know there's a neighborhood there. So I'm a little puzzled by the suggestion that simply it's an industrial and commercial area and not a residential area. So I also have 50 signatures from our parents and our staff asking for this consideration to be made. Thank you very much.
Bring them up here. Thank you. Hi.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shirane Taylor and I live at 124 Clyde Avenue here in Evanston. I'm going to pick up where Cass left off. I'm one of the teachers that takes the children across Main Street to take them for those neighborhood walks. This is part of our curriculum. We do teach the children and we cater to the most vulnerable of society. We cater to 61, I believe, children zero to three-years-old. So we do need buggies, and those buggies are cumbersome and it's hard to get them across the street. And in that area where it's 30 miles an hour, of course, drivers don't drive 30 miles an hour, and many of them don't stop to accommodate us to cross the street when we're trying to get the children to the park. So I'm also advocating for that crosswalk to be placed at Pitner and Main. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Betty Esther. I stay at 2031 Cho Street. I can agree with what I hear.
Excuse me, Betty. Where are you signed up?
Oh, Delores didn't call to say, to sign me up. I talked to her this morning. She was.
Go. I'll put you down.
Okay. I'm sorry. I talked to her and she was making the call and I wasn't. But as I was saying, what they are saying is true. But I want to bring your attention to something that the city just did in creating and changing a curb extension at Church and Dodge. It has went from what I feel and a lot of the neighbors feel in Palos and even Alderman, from what we was told at the city, at the ward meeting, for a bypass to a weird configuration, a dangerous configuration, because that is a corner that you have buses that come. School is going to be starting in a couple of weeks. Kids go catch the bus when the bus turn in. They catch the 205 to go downtown to make their connection with the L and stuff, the 206. But now it's going to be hard because the street is narrow, the bus stop, and the traffic going east have to stop and wait. We have to catch the 208 on the south west corner, the south, anyway, across the street and on the high school part. That is dangerous because before the 205 and the 208 could pull into that curve, traffic would keep and continue. People waiting for the 93 to come downtown didn't have to worry about, ooh, I got to watch the lot, here come the 208. Now I got to run across the street to catch a bus. It was made on, sitting on a curb, that it was not a danger to anybody. Now, that corner, as you know, is a busy crosswalk in the evening, and school is going to start, and that is not safety. I don't know what happened to the plan because what we saw is not what is there now. I don't know where that came from. And it need to be relooked at, and unfortunately, we're going to have to spend, need to spend some money to correct it. Or what is your option that you are talking about to accommodate the buses that travel along there? Because you have trucks that comes down there, and if that bus stop, you have trucks, and in the morning, you're going to have a backup, a traffic jam for people trying to get into the high school. No consideration or no thought was given to that when that extension was put out as far as it is. It's not even, even with the curve on the other side, not even across Darryl. It extends out further into the street. So you have taken up sun off the driveway where the street, where the cars drive. You have made it smaller, just in that one block from Dodge to Darryl. So it need to be looked at and it need to be corrected before the high schools start because then we will have a bad traffic jams and probably a few accidents. Thank you.
Thank you.
And please do what the toddler people ask.
Ms. Esther, before you go, Ms. Robinson, the Director of Public Works, is here. I don't know if the two of you have had a chance to speak today, have you?
No. I talked to Alderman Holmes.
Perhaps maybe you could all talk before Ms. Robinson starts her presentation in a few minutes, just to give you an update. Because we have been in touch, Alderman Holmes is ill. We have been in touch today. So Ms. Robinson, give you an update.
Padma Rao, 2246 Sherman. My comments were approved by my attorney. Today's council agenda purports to address pedestrian safety. I submit that this council's actions contradict its hollow words on the subject. While this council appears eager to discuss fictitious pedestrians, this same council interrupts, attacks, and tries to silence us for stating concerns about the safety of real pedestrians in our neighborhood. You approved an alley that dumps traffic onto the narrowest street on the block. You ignored my neighbor's pleas for the lives of the many young children who happen to live on that street. You display no concern for the real pedestrians in the area, but instead you display the utmost hostility against us for stating concerns about pedestrian safety in our own community. I believe that the stark contrast between this council's words and deeds can be characterized as hypocrisy. You owe a fiduciary responsibility to put taxpayers' safety and welfare first and to spend taxpayers' resources wisely. But it appears to me that your priority is to try to silence anyone who asks you to fulfill your duties, no matter how many tax dollars your unconstitutional actions cost. I submit that you owe the community far more than lip service on the issues and tantrums against those who state their concerns. I further submit that you should show some respect to the taxpayers and their concerns instead of complaining that you are not given what you fail to earn. Back to pedestrian safety. Do the right thing. Protect the pedestrians and trees at Kendall. See you all next time.
The next speakers are BK Rao, Bruce Ennenbach, Carl Bova.
BK Rao. My comments were approved by my attorney. Is the microphone on? Because they have the habit of turning off the microphone on us. My comments were approved by my attorney. When my daughter and I bring pedestrian safety concerns to this council, you interrupt and attack us repeatedly, and your mayor cuts off our microphones. How outlandish that the same council that keeps trying to silence us when we talk about pedestrian safety now claims that it will address the same issue. You refuse to discuss any pedestrian safety concerns raised by taxpayers when you voted for an alley that dumps traffic onto the narrowest street on the block. You ignored my neighbor who told you that several young children live right where you voted to divert the alley. Instead of showing any care for the safety of those children or the safety of any pedestrians in the community, this council focused all of its energies on trying to bully us into silence. You are all responsible for approving a plan that endangers pedestrians and involves killing numerous trees for no reason.
Ms. Rao, if you're talking about Kendall, please stop.
Why? Trees are also off the talk. I'm talking about the trees.
We have.
And pedestrian safety.
We have already ruled that the trees.
Trees? What happens to the trees? I can't even say trees.
Did you even read your Ethics Entities Report? Can you read?
They didn't say that I should not.
Where did it mention trees? Where did it mention pedestrian safety?
Where did they say that I should not say trees? Yeah, if you want, go, go ahead. Turn it off.
This is a redundant conversation in the ruling of the chair.
But what I'm saying is.
There is no conversation.
No conversation, public comment. We don't want to have a conversation with you. We are stating our opinion. You took an excuse and you brought up something that she did not mention. She talked about pedestrian safety and she talked about trees in our neighborhood. You think it pertains to something fine because you know that you're guilty of something. You tell me, where in your Ethics Entities Report does it say that people are not allowed to talk about trees and are not allowed to talk about pedestrian safety in their own neighborhood? You tell me where the Ethics Entity has jurisdiction to make that decision. It is ridiculous. You obviously did not read your own Ethics Lackeys Report, did you? Or can you? Are you even capable of understanding what they actually wrote and what they decided, such as it is?
Trees. I can mention trees. I can mention pedestrian safety.
And this is exactly proving the point. We are not allowed to talk about our own neighborhood. You have the gall to talk about pedestrian safety, and yet you ignore it selectively when there are real people involved.
Even more implorable, you are all responsible for violating taxpayers' constitutional rights to demand that you do your job. Do your job, which is to protect the pedestrians, all pedestrians, including those at Kendall. Protect the pedestrians and trees at Kendall, and I shall return. And I will talk about trees and pedestrians and peace in the neighborhood.
Congratulations on joining Saddam Hussein.
Thank you very much. That concludes citizen comment.
I think you have a few more.
At least, oh, Bruce Ennenbach, sorry. Bruce, where are you? Bruce and Carl. If you gave me another free to, I'd be okay.
With regards to pedestrian safety, one word: enforcement. Without it, all this work is really worthless. And I'm a frequent walker in this town. I walk all over the place, and I'm very frequently harassed by automobiles that don't quite understand what pedestrian right-of-way is. And unfortunately, I'm sad to report that this lack of knowledge and practice extends to our police department as well. So we need to educate. I'll be very brief. And the only education that will work is abundant, strict, and zero-tolerance enforcement. The reason people in California stop for you, you've probably all been to LA or San Francisco or wherever in California, and when you step in a pedestrian walkway, they stop. And the reason they do is it's been enforced for a long period of time. And until we do something like that, nothing's going to happen. So one word I'd like to leave with you all is enforcement. We need to emulate what California has done, and nothing less will do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bova.
Carl Bova, 1322 Rosely Street. More than a handful of years ago, the city's transportation budget line item for pavement markings was only about $10,000 for the whole year, for the whole city. And today, you're being asked to approve $56,000 for 10 solar-powered stop signs. I don't condone the spending of $56,000 for 10 signs. The placement of these signs at schools with crossing guards is not, not a very effective use of this sum of money because guards themselves are the most effective safety improvement that can be made. Everything else is, is minor by comparison. I'd recommend that the $56,000 for 10 signs be spent on other, more effective measures, such as better crossings and markings, and replacement of $56,000 worth of unsafe sidewalks that could have far greater positive impact more universally throughout the schools areas, as well as the city on the whole. Thank you.
Thank you. That really does conclude citizen comment. City manager, did you want Director Robinson to make a presentation?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We're pleased to be here this evening with the report after really an intense effort of the last five or six weeks, and Director Robinson is here with that presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Clerk Green, City Manager. I'm Suzette Robinson, the Director of Public Works. And the only thing that's missing is the title slide for the pedestrian safety. A month ago, we asked, excuse me, your permission to establish a pedestrian evaluation committee to take a closer look at one of the council's goals, which in general is safety. But you wanted us to directly look at the pedestrian safety aspect. And this is the, the first report to follow up to some of the findings that the pedestrian safety committee put together. But I just wanted to remind you of the accident, pedestrian accident history. I think the mayor mentioned it earlier. We're moving in the right direction. And some of the recommendations that we are presenting tonight, we think will improve upon that, our good safety history. One of the, the other things that we took a look at, in addition to the, the safety data over the last three years, we actually drilled down to identify the time that most of the accidents occurred. And then we also looked at the, the age groups as well to really look at, okay, where are the, the problem areas? And so when we looked at our recommendations, we could really make sure that those recommendations addressed all of those issues. So as I mentioned before, the, the evaluation committee was formed and it consists of myself, Sat Nagar, the senior construction and civil engineer, Rajiv Dehaal, the senior traffic engineer, Tom Twiggs is our traffic operations manager, and Michelle Kane is the, my executive secretary, who pulled together a lot of this information, from the Evanston Police Department, Chief Richard Eddington, and Sergeant Moran, who was in charge of the traffic division, Sam Swartz, engineer, the two consultants that are here today, Mark de la Verge, did I say that right? Vern? Okay, close enough. And Active Transportation Alliance, Paul Lippens. So they'll be here to also answer any questions that you may have as we move on. The four areas that we took a look at was the pedestrian crossings and designations and the priorities. And we made a distinction between those crossings without traffic signals and stop signs, which are, we have referred to in the past as uncontrolled crossings. We also looked at the, the school route, the safe route to school. We looked at safety and the education program. We looked at speed reduction strategies. And then we looked at the high, high-volume pedestrian crossings at intersections with traffic signals where we have experienced a higher number of pedestrian accidents at, at signalized locations as well. So basically, I'm not going to go into all of the, the things that we presented in the report, but I am going to summarize the, the recommendations from each of the areas that, that we studied. So we reviewed the, the crossings and designations, looked at the, the walk route plan, and, and we also looked at other community practices and some of our existing treatments. And we looked at what else was out there in terms of additional treatment or attributes that we could add to the crossings to make them more prevalent. So we came up with just four categories of designations. The school crossings, which is pretty self-explanatory, as well as seniors, park crossings, and then everything else will fall into a general crossing category. For the school crossings, in addition to the, the, the things that are already there, we want to complete the sidewalk curb extensions. They increase pedestrian visibility by having those and shortening, shortening the crossing distance. It also allows the pedestrian that's crossing the street better visibility in terms of looking on oncoming traffic, and it also provides the, the vehicles and alerting to them that pedestrians are waiting to cross. Prior to putting those measures in place, we are proposing, and I believe this was a recommendation or a request from Alderman Burris, to look at if there are, were there temporary things that we can do to, to put a temporary bump out in place until such time one can be constructed. And so our recommendation is to, to go ahead and, and put those temporary measures in place while we wait for the safe route to school program to construct the, the bump outs at the school designated areas, which is scheduled to be constructed in 2013. So we'll put the temporary bump outs in place prior to that. And the signage that we're recommending is the LED blinker crossing signal. And we actually got, there was a similar signal that we observed in Willmette. And, and it really had a, a smaller flashing, flashing light that was really not as visible, and we. had a smaller flashing light that was really not as visible, and we, at one of the conferences, this sign was actually there, and it can be pushed-activated. And what that means is, in placing it at that crossing, we recognize that the after-school activities, that when there's no crossing guard present, you know, pushing the button would still allow for drivers to know that there was somebody waiting to cross. And a crossing guard does not guarantee that kids will be able to cross the street safely. As you know, you're aware, in the past, we've had a crossing guard get hit. So there are, a crossing guard is not necessarily a guarantee that traffic is going to stop if the driver is distracted. Senior crossings, we're going to complete the installation of the signage, and right now, our crossings don't have the required senior crossing designation underneath the pedestrian crossing sign, so we would install those, and then we're going to complete curb extensions wherever we can. And I think we just have one location where we need to do a curb extension for the senior Park crossings, we're going to complete the installation of all the signs, and we're recommending expanding the flag crossings that we've used at Love Lakes Park, and we also have a couple along Sheridan Road. We do lose the flags, but we lose the flags mostly to the younger ones. You know, getting a flag out of a two-year-old's hand after they've used it to wave across the street, you know, it's very difficult. So sometimes the parents don't win that tug-of-war, and rather than have a tantrum on Sheridan Road, they allow the child to take the flag. So, and so they cost very little, and so we think that that has been really effective. And sometimes people bring them back, you know, even days later, you know, when they realize that, if they use the park on a regular basis. So then we also have completing the curb extensions, and we put where road conditions permit and in conjunction with resurfacing projects. And what that means is, there are certain places where bump outs don't work because of traffic limitations and the construction of the roadway. So we will put them wherever we could, and we are recommending for park crossings that we do them in conjunction when we resurface the roads, that we would actually, you know, take a hard look at the bump out required along those paths and complete those at that time. In general crossings, once again, that involves completing the installations of the signs. So right now, we have pedestrian crossings at all of our uncontrolled crossings, but we don't have the site stop-for-pedestrian signage. So we're recommending that all crossings at a minimum have that stop-for-pedestrian crossing sign on the side of the roads, and that the senior crossing and the school crossings would be the only crossing that would have the in-street signs. So the other thing that we're asking you to approve is our criteria for establishing crossings. We want to look at the proximity of the pedestrian generators, the proximity of existing crossings, the street classification, visibility, availability of sidewalk and compliance with ADA requirements, number of crossings during peak hours, you know, look at the classification, and then the prevailing speed volumes and gap in traffic flow. And that last piece is really key, the gaps in the traffic flow, because, you know, we actually use that right now. That's one of the primary things that we take a look at, is if there is not enough time, if the traffic doesn't allow gaps, then we really look at trying to establish a pedestrian crossing to be able to slow the traffic down so people can cross. And then we also will look at the accident history. We had, as a part of this process, and probably six to eight months before that, we had some, the residents provided us with some areas they wanted us to take a look at. And I'm going to take one of the crossings that's not listed on here, and Alderman Homes reminded me of it, and it's not listed up here, not because we forgot, we actually did discuss it, but it was resolved, and we got an answer back from IDOT, and that was the crossing, there was a request for a pedestrian crossing at Church and McDaniel, which is IDOT's road. We submitted that as a part of the reconstruction project that they're going to be starting in about, I think they start next month, next month? And they denied the crossing. And part of it had to do with, you know, to install a pedestrian crossing, because people are crossing, if it's not a safe crossing, they don't recommend that a crossing be established. And the proximity to the bridge in terms of visibility, and because it's a four-lane, four lanes of traffic at that point, they're recommending that, well, they basically denied our request to establish a crossing at that point. What I did share with the Alderman is that, as a part of the bike lane extension into that area, that we would take a look at reconfiguring the road in such a way that we could shorten the crossing distance, and then at that point, we would go back to IDOT and ask them to establish a crossing for that location.
Excuse me, Alderman Burris has a question.
Looking at this list, I'm obviously extremely disappointed, as you're probably well aware, particularly on the Oakton and Florence, a need for a crosswalk, and a need for a crosswalk from Oakton and Ridge, between Oakton and Ridge and Oakton and Custer, there's no crosswalk, which is about .3 miles. And then there's no crosswalk from, between Wesley and Oakton and Dodge and Oakton, which is .4 miles. So maybe I've missed it, but I believe that you're not recommending a crosswalk there. And once we get to the speed limits, I'll come back and voice my objections again on the non-speed limit recommendation. But this is, you know, probably out of everyone, I've been the most vocal on pedestrian safety. I've brought statistics on what's happened on Oakton, you know, people, students being hit, many residents coming out saying, "We can't get across the street." But again, we're not getting what we need to get our residents across the street. So very disappointed that they're not there. With that said, I thank you for the temporary bump outs until we get the permanent ones in 2013, and once you get to speed limits, I will come back with that.
Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Suzette. I think one of the crossings that you might have forgotten was one that we've been talking about for a long time at Forest Place and Davis Street. That's a section in which we lowered the speed limit down from 30 to 25 in order to qualify for the IDOT site distances. And before Paul Schneider left, we had determined that the location for this should be just almost immediately north of Davis, about maybe 12 to 15 feet north of Davis, crossing into the park, that there were a lot of people who could not get across that intersection down to the beach. So I hope you'll include that back on your list.
I'm sorry, that concludes the comments so far. So going back to the listing that we received, and we will take into account the additional crossings that were raised by both Aldermen. At Oakton and Barton, we're recommending designating that as a safe route to school crossing and assigning a crossing guard. We would also be putting a temporary bump out, and it already has an in-street sign and the signage present as well. Central and Broadway was a challenging intersection. We made some temporary improvements in putting a pedestrian crossing there. We're recommending holding neighborhood meetings. We have some ideas as it relates to changing some traffic patterns and street directions to try to address that intersection a little better until we can reconstruct and reconfigure, because it really is a major reconstruction project that's required in that area. So, but we do have some ideas what we can do in the near term to try to improve that as well. Church and Wesley is already a school route, but the signs aren't completely installed, and we will finish that. It's a designated school route, a crossing already, and it just doesn't have the in-street sign, I believe is the only missing component. Main and Custer, that was an area that the pedestrians, it has more to do with visibility in terms of residents not being able to cross in that location, so we're recommending the removal of two metered parking spaces to improve visibility. Crawford and Thayer, that's an area where they're, we're not recommending right now a crossing until sidewalks are installed in that area. For us to place a pedestrian crossing and meet ADA requirements, we have to have a sidewalk for pedestrians to be able to cross safely to and from, and so we're hoping to have that be accomplished as a part of a reconstruction project in that area. Oakton and Hardtree, we're recommending lengthening the no-parking area for drop-off and increasing parking capacity within the park. There are sidewalks and overflow parking available, and a traffic signal that was installed to facilitate crossing at the Home Depot area, and we think that with expanding the no drop, the expanding and establishing a drop-off area adjacent to James Park would really facilitate people being able to drop their children off and seeking parking elsewhere. Oakton and Florence, we're recommending that same type of a drop-off scenario on the south side by the school grounds for the fields in that area. And one of the main reasons why we don't want to establish that as a crossing, or a higher-grade crossing, is because we are concerned that students will use that as a designated crossing area. So unless we're going to place a crossing guard there, we would end up with a situation where the residents, I mean, the residents, the students who are actually really good at crossing, at their designated crossing in front of Chute, we were concerned that they would instead go down the street and cross where the crossing guard is not present.
Excuse me, Director Robinson. Alderman Rainey has something to say.
A question. Suzette, is the Oakton and Florence crossing the one where there's the state flashing yellow light pedestrian crossing, is that where that is right now? At Oakton and Florence? What street is that, that it's at? Oh, no, Florence is east of Chute, right?
Yes, yes.
What street is that on, that's not Hardtree? There is a pedestrian crossing.
At Gray.
At Gray. I use that street maybe two times a day. I have seen hundreds of people crossing Oakton, not one of them ever in that crosswalk, ever, ever, ever.
At Gray, you mean?
Yeah. Nobody ever crosses there. Everybody crosses every place else but there. Just so you know, I'm just thinking we might want to reconsider the location of that crossing. It's completely ignored. But not by cars. Most cars stop there. Nobody's in the walk, but they stop.
The next location is Dodge Avenue, Main to Oakton. Oh, between the, between, from Main to Oakton, there is no crossing along Dodge Avenue, and this was a request from a resident for not just a crosswalk, but also ADA accessibility. And so we are recommending that a crosswalk be installed near Monroe. At Asbury and Grove, there was a request, and we're not recommending a crosswalk there. There is a designated school crossing one block to the south. At Asbury and Lake with a crossing guard, and then Asbury and Davis already has a traffic signal. At Grove and Elmwood, we're not recommending a crosswalk at that area, and it has to do with the visibility of signs and pedestrians. The intersection to the west is all stop-controlled, and to the east, it has a traffic signal. At Main and Pittner, that location was requested. There's limited pedestrian activity in the area, and it's an industrial corridor, and that's why we didn't recommend it. That is, we have a lot of trucks and equipment turning out from the tree company along there, as well as the business activity level along Pittner. What we are recommending, and it's not shown on that slide, is that we look at installing a sidewalk on the, that would connect from the residential neighborhood down to the bridge, basically, along Sam's Club on that side of the street. At Ridge and Colfax, we have not observed a tremendous amount of pedestrian activity in that area, and one block to the north is the light at Ridge and Lincoln, and also at Ridge and Noise. So we're not recommending a crossing across Ridge. Grant and Cartwright, there are no sidewalks on the southwest side, and we only observe three pedestrians crossing, but we're recommending that we restudy the area after the sidewalk is constructed by the Presbyterian homes as a part of their ongoing improvements. Chicago Avenue, Greenleaf to Lee, we were asked to take a look at that as well, and half a block north is a traffic signal at Chicago and Greenleaf at a signal, and so therefore, we are not recommending a crossing at that location. Lincoln School, this is, was not, this was a pedestrian safety issue, but not necessarily a crossing issue. District 65 approached us, they were having some concerns with apparent drop-off in the morning. We discussed the issue with their staff and also with the Ward Aldermen, and we are recommending that establishing a do-not-enter restriction for northbound traffic on Forest that Main, and establish a four-way traffic control to address that issue and to facilitate a drop-off and pickup, which is very similar to what we have in other areas.
Excuse me, Alderman Grover has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director. If we could, if I could ask our wonderful, my favorite, traffic engineers to consider the possibility of adding a crossing at Aggleston Park, where Hardtree hits the T-intersection at Grant Street. I don't believe there's any pavement marking there now, and it'd be nice to have something at that park entrance. Thank you for your consideration.
Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Suzette, on Colfax and Ridge, I understand what you're saying about there not being very many pedestrians. That's a really problematic intersection, though, for cars turning north and south because the sightlines are so poor. So I'd like you to take a look at that with the understanding that that really is a direct route into the park, and there are a lot of families with little kids that do cross that street. So even if you don't see them, the distraction to drivers of trying to get the sightlines correct means that they're usually stepping on that gas and trying to roar into the intersection to avoid oncoming traffic from the north or south. So I think that bears a, just a closer look.
The next area that we took a look at was, we looked at the crossing guard program, and basically, the city funds 49 crossing guards for 45 locations. We looked at our funding levels and made some comparisons, and Willmette, Skokie, and several surrounding communities have similar funding mechanisms, meaning that the school, the cities are paying for the crossing guards. Mount Prospect and New Lenox School Districts actually fund their crossing guards. Blue Island has a cost-sharing program. Forest Park is considered moving to cost-sharing. And then we also took a look outside of our immediate And then, we also took a look outside of our immediate area and nationally, there are some school districts that are utilizing parent volunteers or custodial staff to perform So, we also looked at crossing guard criteria. I'm going to come back to the crossing guard placement recommendation piece at the moment for, to address that. But, we also looked at the criteria that we're recommending to place a new crossing guard at controlled intersections. We're recommending at least 20 crossings during a drop-off or pickup. So, that means 20 no matter when. If you have, only had 20 at drop-off, it would qualify. If you had 10 in the morning, 10 in the afternoon, it would qualify, but less than that. And at uncontrolled locations, we're without traffic signals or stop sign, we're recommending that there be at least 15 students that cross.
Director Robinson, Alderman Burris has something to say.
You mentioned parent volunteers. I've been bringing this up for, I don't know, maybe three years now. Has there been any movement in having that conversation with the school district or the school district having that with parent organizations? And where does that stand at the moment? Thanks.
We have not had a discussion, again, about a year and a half ago. Paul Snyder did approach District 65 with that concept and there was not much interest. And we are going to revisit again.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you again. That was one of my questions, Alderman Burris, is the school district now has $100,000 to do educational and encouragement programming as part of the Safe Routes to School funding. And now, it seemed to be the time, we're a month out from the first day of school, to really ramp up some programming for this next school year. And I would imagine that the start of school would be prime time to make this happen. And I think now's a good time maybe to do what we can to prod the school District 65 into undertaking some programming. They're waiting, your report says they're waiting for the I.DOT funding to come through, the Safe Route, Safe Routes to School funding to hit the bank account. But, it would seem to me planning could still happen and do you have wind of any?
Let me just say that the money that they have for education and programming cannot be used for crossing guards.
Right.
So, the only thing, they could take any education money that they may have budgeted previously and kind of divert that. So, we can take a look at that. But, I can say that while the construction project for Safe Routes to School has been released, the education piece has been on hold. So, it, and it has not been funded. So, we're not sure when that, that piece will be funded. But certainly, this is, we could have a plan in place that, to see, to look at either a cost-sharing or at least establishing a volunteer corps. We could, we could talk to them about that. Now, that money, now that funding is available.
Aside from the whole crossing guard issue, maybe now's the time for all of us to get in touch with our school board members and the administration, District 65, to encourage them to really start thinking hard about what they want to do about using how they're going to do the programming for the Safe Routes to School. That's a lot of money and they can do a lot of good programming and.
Yes.
Love to see it happen.
Yes. And we do have some recommendations for them, we just haven't met.
I know. I saw the recommendations and it seems to me a lot of them would be very easy to do, including tapping into volunteer corps or volunteer crossing guards. I'm sure that the $100,000 for educational encouragement could be used for volunteer crossing guard.
Encouraging volunteers, for sure.
Right, indeed. Thank you.
Since they have this money, Director Robinson, could you possibly suggest to District 65 that they might let the children know that they're not safe when they're in a crosswalk? Just because they're in a crosswalk, if it doesn't have a crossing guard, they have to be their own crossing guard. And look, I have seen wonderful little kids, three together, walk right into the crosswalk without ever looking because they'd been taught to go in the crosswalk and they did it beautifully. But, nobody said, "Do this and you're slightly safer, but you still have to look out for yourself." So, I think we've given them too much of a crosswalk message and not enough of a stay, take care of yourself.
Alderman Burris and then Alderman Fisk?
Director Robinson, you mentioned that Paul Schneider, who former, formerly here, spoke with someone at District 65 that indicated that parents did not want to partake in crosswalk safety for students. That seems odd to me. And could we have the name of whoever it was at District 65? Because I'm sure that there are many groups here in Evanston that would like to reach out to that person at District 65 about pedestrian safety.
No, I did not say that. The parents weren't interested? I said District 65 wasn't interested. Not that they contacted the parents.
But, the question I asked was, did we reach out to District 65 about parents being volunteers and involved? And you said that Paul Schneider reached out to 65 and 65 said, "No, we do not." So, could I have the name of who it was at District? I think I've asked for this about six months ago and I've never received it. I'd like to have it again so we can make it publicly available for, like I said, many of the organizations that are very concerned about public safety. They're coming to the council. They should also be reaching out strongly to District 65 School Board, parents, superintendents, principals that have, over the years, continued to not be a partner in this with us.
Alderman Fisk, did you have?
I have something to ask. For a minute, can we expand our concept of safe routes to school to include the intersection of Emerson and Sheridan, two university students? Have we reached out to the university, since that's one of the intersections that has been cited as having the most pedestrian accidents? Can we reach out to the university to ask if they can provide a crossing guard? It's a really problematic intersection, even though there is a traffic signal less than half a block away. That's where the sorority quads are really located, along with Willard Hall. Number of other dormitory territories are right in that section. If they could provide a crossing guard at certain times of the day to help control this traffic, maybe we'd have less students involved and put in direct conflict with cars.
Okay, we can do that.
Hugh Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just as a follow-up to the District 65 discussion and since Oakton School is such a focus in this conversation, I'd love to work with either the eighth or ninth ward alderman. As a Oakton parent, maybe we can cut through some of this red tape and sit directly with the principal and also members of the PTA prior to school and see what we can do to help educate the students and also the parents. And I would love to be a part of that, since I am a parent there. Thank you for bringing it to attention.
Director Robinson, are you done with your?
No.
You're not? All right, let's take two more comments and then let's try to let Director Robinson finish and then, then we can ask questions. Alderman Wilson?
I'd like to keep me on the list, but I'd like to hear the rest of the report.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
I'd just like to say in defense of Oakton parents and the principal there, that I am absolutely certain without any caution whatsoever, that no Oakton parent and no Oakton official ever said that they weren't interested in school safety and that they wouldn't do everything to assure safety in their school. I don't know where the concern is about that, but that didn't come out of Oakton. So.
Thank you, and I'm sure you're right.
I am.
All right, Director Robinson, sorry for the.
Okay, I was just signing up Alderman Braithwaite as the first parent volunteer crossing guard for Oakton. So. The other crossing guard criteria recommendation that in order to reassign or eliminate an existing crossing guard, you know, we find that, that once we place a crossing guard at a location, it's very difficult to remove it even if there are no student crossing. And, and part of all of this criteria, we're also recommending, at least twice a year, we would go back and review and do detailed traffic counts before we made recommendations for eliminating or reassignment of crossing guards. So, we're looking at, at intersection, at intersections where there are fewer than 15 crossings at controlled, signalized locations and at less than 10 crossings at an uncontrolled intersection during the drop-off pickup hours. Regardless of all the criteria, before we would recommend an elimination or a new crossing guard, we would secure city council approval. That's the final piece of the crossing guard criteria. And then, going back to the recommendations, you know, staff to contact District 65 to look at establishing either the parent volunteer or the school custodial crossing. One of the concerns that District 65, and when I say District 65, this was not the parents, this is the administration who we were meeting and discussing issues with. And one of the concerns that they raised was off of their property, meaning on streets not adjacent to the school, they had a concern about liability beyond the school grounds. So, we do have quite a few crossing guards that are not placed adjacent to school property. So, I just wanted to point that out, that we may be looking at some type of cost-sharing with the parent volunteer program, but we will consider that as well, which is the second item. Ask District 65 if they would take a look at that. Education and encouragement, this follows what Alderman Grover raised in terms of what they can do with their $100,000. And one of the easy things that costs no money is to place the Safe Routes to School on each school's homepage. Right now, it's buried in the District 65 Transportation page. And when you think about transportation, you don't think about kids walking to school, you think about buses. So, it's very difficult. Parents would not know at the current time how to find that route to school, further schools. So, we're making, we want it to be prominently displayed on each individual school's website. And then, we wanted to encourage walking school buses and bike trains. Walking school buses where there's actually parent volunteer in the area who's already walking their kids to school, whether it's a group of parents. And they take turns and they walk several kids to school as a group and that parent is responsible. Same thing with the bike train. Those kids that are biking to school, a parent bikes with a group of them and gets them to school safely. And we also want to encourage parents to park and walk their kids to school instead of to clear up the congestion in front of the school building itself, to teach the pedestrians and bicycle safety skills and then to teach the traffic safety rules in and around the school. So, what the city can do, continue to promote and participate in events that encourage walking and biking. And those are some examples that we did. The Paint Evanston Plow Safety Theme, Be Alert Traffic Hurts, I think, was one of the themes that we did for pedestrian safety. And we're recommending painting safety markers on the pavement at each designated school crossing and that symbol over there, I never can. We're recommending the little figurine over there gets, that would be our sticker that we would hand out on the first day of school. And we would put that at the threshold to the crossing on the sidewalk so that kids know that that is actually the designated school crossing. So, and the fire department has graciously, at least the chief, I don't know if he shared it with the rest of his crew, they agreed to pass out stickers on the first day of school. And I would like to take credit for this, but I cannot. It was our mayor Tisdale's recommendation to have the fire department come out and issue back-to-school stickers to make kids more aware. And my executive secretary actually did the artwork. So, the other thing is to sponsor that back-to-school awareness campaign where we would hand out the stickers on the first day of school. Then, we would also add additional education and awareness materials to the city's website on stop for pedestrian laws, to really educate people on what those signs mean. And then, there was also to do that both in English and in Spanish. One of the things we were asked to take a look at was the automated photo enforcement system to see if that was a means of controlling speed in adjacent to schools. The city of Chicago recently adopted this. Right now, the Illinois Vehicle Code only allows for the city of Chicago to be able to do that by limiting, limiting it to populations over a million, which is a nice way of saying the city of Chicago. So, right now, we would have to change state legislation to even consider this proposal. So, the other speed reductions, recommendations, we are recommending the corridors with high pedestrian activity in retail districts, all of them except the two that are listed below have speed limits that are 25 miles per hour or lower. And we're recommending that we extend those 25 mile an hour speed limits to Chicago Avenue, which is also, I would say, our high, one of our highest pedestrian accident corridors. And then, Central Street from McDaniel to Central Park to extend the 25 mile an hour. Basically, it would extend it from the lakefront all the way to Central Park Avenue. The other thing that we're recommending for speed reduction is the radar speed display. That has been very effective in reducing, in getting traffic to reduced speeds. So, we're recommending permanent speed displays be placed along three corridors where we have schools and parks. That's along Church Street, Main Street and Oakton Street. And then, we're also recommending additional temporary placements. So, the permanent speed displays would kind of establish the corridor on the ends, but the temporary radars would be placed, whether it's placed adjacent to a particular school, it can be placed on a residential block. We, these, both instruments actually monitor traffic 24 hours a day. So, we will be able to look at if there is a speeding problem, when does that occur? And then, also be able to kind of report realistic data in terms of whether, you know, traffic, there are speeders or not and to what degree. So, we will be able to get even more detailed data on exactly where and what hours we're having problems. And then, that way, we could target our enforcement accordingly. The pedestrian accident locations, we took a look at, and I think this is the final area of the report. And this is, as I mentioned, the accidents were primary along Chicago Avenue corridor in the downtown area. One of our, the primary reasons is the vehicles are not yielding to pedestrians while making that left turn. And actually, you know, when they're in a hurry to try to make that light on green or whether it turns yellow in the mist and they're making that left turn, they don't look until the last minute to see that there's actually a pedestrian in the crosswalk. So, Ridge and Davis is an example of all that. And all the seven, seven accidents involve left turns westbound from Davis onto Ridge. So, we are recommending a few things that, one is the turning, traffic must stop sign, installing that sign. We're also looking at installing countdown signals, at all those signals that we haven't upgraded yet. And basically, it will tell pedestrians how much time they have left to cross the street. And then, we also, where we're doing the new upgrades, and I think Sheridan Road, with the exception of Ridge and, there's one microwave detection system?
Church and Ridge.
Church and Sheridan, I'm sorry, already has it. And all the other signals along Sheridan Road will have the microwave detection system where you don't have to push the light, the, they can detect the presence of a pedestrian automatically. And then, it will allow, there's an audible tone that tells the resident, I mean, the resident, the pedestrian is safe to cross and gives them the verbal instructions. So, we think that is probably the state of the art. Some of our signals that we recently upgraded have been upgraded to the countdown signal, which is also, we think, an improvement. which is also, we think, an improvement. And then the final thing we want to consider perhaps more as a pilot program, is to install a different crosswalk treatment. In some business district and retail areas, that is actually a thermoplastic sticker that is placed across the road to, at signalized locations primarily to alert drivers that they're approaching a crosswalk. So, that is something that we would like to take a look at. We had actually talked with Northwestern about a year ago about the possibility of installing that crosswalk. I believe it was along Clark at the two at Burger King. So, I guess we'll talk more about whether we want to try that. And I can give you some more examples of where it's actually in existence. In some communities, there are actually bricks, where they have put bricks, but we don't want to do bricks anymore. So, like Ocalon, in their business district, all up and down their retail area, they have the brick type, and this is just the thermoplastic treatment. And then finally, our implementation goals, all the signs and markings, we hope to have installed by August 31st. The speed radar placement, December 2012, and then curb extensions in construction 2013 with Safe Routes to School and the senior crossing that we have outstanding and beyond that with all the other park crossings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. I'm going to add to my comments. First of all, I want to make it, at least as far as my personal experience is concerned, I've found that the school district, particularly District 65, has been very responsive. When I have questions or want to have a meeting, I've met with Dr. Murphy, I've met with principals, I've met with PTA members, parents, even going as far as meeting with crossing guards, police that are actually doing the work out there on the streets. And I have found that the district has been very responsive, and I know that they are working on these issues presently and continue to do so. But one of the things I want to try to, let me double back. This was an excellent report. It was put together in short order. These solutions have been very well reasoned. I appreciate all of the time and effort that you guys have put into this. This is outstanding, and this is great work product. And I couldn't be more pleased. I wouldn't pick maybe all of the decisions that you've made, but for the most part, I understand them all, and like I said, they're very well reasoned. We tend to want to, in life, we want to point fingers. We want to blame somebody. We want to say this is somebody's fault. And I think it's easy to get kind of sucked into that mindset. And then what I want to try to avoid doing, and what I think your reporting, your information has helped steer us in that direction, is to not adopt the road rage mentality in making our decision, our decisions and what we're trying to do. Things make us angry, things upset us, but if we lash out, it's, all it's going to do is it's going to put the other person on the defensive, and it's going to, it's not going to result in constructive solutions. You have to assume that people aren't going to follow the rules. Kids aren't going to follow the rules. Kids are going to ride their bicycle on the wrong side of the street. Kids are going to cross in the middle of the intersection. Bikes are not going to follow the rules. Bikes are going to take the turn too wide, they're going to take it too narrow. Cars are not going to follow the rules. People are not going to follow the rules. If we had a city where every single rule, if everybody followed every sign and rule that we have right now, we would probably have zero accidents. So, what we end up having to do is work with the lowest common denominator, make these assumptions. But in conjunction with our education efforts, and I don't know how you do this, and not to try to be all zen about this, but we need a fundamental shift in our mindset. Every day, people make a decision, you know, am I going to, you know, even if you have the timer, okay, I've got five seconds to cross that intersection, or four seconds, I can make it, run for it. You run for it, but the car turning left, they're trying to get to their appointment, they're trying to get their kids somewhere. They're not a bad person, they're not an evil person, neither one of them are a bad person necessarily. Sometimes there are, but usually they're not. But what we need to do is just have that fundamental shift in our mindset and slow down, make appropriate decisions, and stop trying to rush through things. Getting from point A to point B shouldn't be a battle, and it's not a race, and we shouldn't treat it that way. And I think that's what we end up doing in our day-to-day lives. And I want to try to steer myself and my colleagues away from that mindset as well, and to focus in on the constructive solutions that will make Evanston a continually more safe place to live in and enjoy.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to talk about some things that parents can do, especially one specific thing. And that is at Dawes School, no, Suzette, I want you to hear this. At Dawes, oh, okay. At Dawes School, before school and when school lets out, you can barely, if you're a regular driver, you can barely get down Dodge Avenue because parents double park. Not only do they double park, but then they exit and enter the vehicle with their children from the street. To, I'm sure not one parent or child has ever been hit doing that on Dodge, but it's an accident waiting to happen. I have called the police when I've come down Dodge. I've talked to crossing guards when I've come down Dodge. The, I have actually seen the police, and Sergeant Moran, this might be helpful, on days when there's an absence or, you know, a lot going on, if there is a police officer there, there is never enforcement of double parking. I just think it's the most dangerous thing in the world to do, because then you've got people pulling in and out, and you're not expecting it. So, that's one thing. Second thing, about pedestrians, and this is something the city can do, and I am going to move right now to make a referral to Administration and Public Works to restore the 50/50 sidewalk program. I know Carl mentioned, Carl Bova mentioned the sidewalk problem. We don't have, this is all our fault, and I totally miss this, but we do not have the 50/50 sidewalk program in our capital plan for this year. We've got to find some money. I'm sure there's leftover money in various pots that we can put, cobble together to get the sidewalks that people have requested for the 50/50 program. We have people falling. Those are pedestrians, and I think we need to think about that as well. So, also, I want to again comment on Oakton School. They did the fabulous renovation on Oakton with the bus drive-through. I mean, that was just a beautiful job that they did. And that was all in addressing parent concerns about the problems over on Austin, where the buses and the cars and people parking in alleys. So, I just think that they're just the epitome of caring about school safety.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
The speed limit reduction recommendations. Frustrated, actually, quite frankly, I'm perplexed, and here's why. I agree with the reductions that, on the 25 mile on Chicago Avenue as well as Central Street. What I'm confused by is, obviously, I asked for a reduction on Oakton, and the majority of the council decided that was not a good idea. But now that we're talking about going to 25 miles and other places, the two places that you have chosen to recommend, Chicago Avenue has zero parks or schools in that strip, and Central has, where you chose to recommend, has one very small park and no schools. Again, not against those being 25 miles and slowing down traffic. Where I'm perplexed is where we hear a lot from residents on Oakton and Main. Oakton, from Hartree to Ridge, is approximately one mile. Of that one mile strip, .7 mile of that is either a park or a school. So, on Oakton, you have Schut, you have the Schut Playfield, you have Oakton School, you have the park next to Oakton, you have Dawes, and you have James Park, that is just on Oakton. Okay, but we've decided not to make a recommendation to lower the speed limit, but we decided to make a recommendation to lower the speed limit in a retail, two retail districts. I just want to understand. Main Street, let's go down Main Street, we have, which I, the Child Welfare Daycare. We have James Park and Robert Crown, lot of kids, lot of traffic going on with kids coming in and out. We have Washington School. Then we have Gray Park, and then we have Park School on Main as well. So, let me add it up, just, and again, on Oakton, District 65, nearly 19% of all of the students on District 65 attend school on Oakton Street. But we've making a choice, from what I understand from your recommendation, not to lower the speed limit for those children that we care, seem to care more about the retail districts. So, on Oakton and Main, we have Schut, Oakton, Dawes, Washington School, and Park School. So, we have five schools on those two streets. So, I would assume if you added in Washington School and Park School, you have to be at least close to 25 to 30% of District 65 students that are attending school on those two streets. We need to reevaluate our priorities on who we want to make safe in this city.
Thank you, Alderman Burris. Alderman Grover?
Thank you again. By my estimation, the two were streets to be a pedestrian or runner on, our Main Street and Isabella, where there are whole sidewalks missing. That's my long-term plan, but more short-term, I'd like you to reconsider the recommendation about no crossing at Main and Pittner to serve the Infant Welfare Society. I think that'd be a good idea. I'll defer to the expertise of the traffic engineers, but if you could reconsider it, I would be very supportive, as well as supportive of lowering the speed limit on Oakton. I think I moved at one point to lower it to 25 as a compromise, and would still like to see that happen for all the reasons that Alderman Burris has highlighted. And the Central Street portion for reducing the speed to 25, I think there are other portions of Central Street, I'm thinking east of Green Bay, where the speed limit near the stadium there is still 30 miles an hour. I know it's a state route, and it may be a challenge to address or adjust the speed limit there, but I understood that it felt to me in years past, as you go east on Central Street, the speed limit picks up again once you cross Green Bay and Broadway going east. If you could just confirm.
Okay.
And I wouldn't mind at all seeing the speed limit on that portion of Central Street reduced as well to 25 miles an hour, given all the activity that we're hoping for in that portion of Central Street. And then finally, if anyone watched the Tour de France or the bike races as part of the Olympics, the aerial view of some of those bike routes showed the center line in France and in, maybe it was in London in the Olympics. On the traffic lanes, as you approached an pedestrian crossing, the center line went zigzagged, as did any kind of other lane markings, which was a way of signaling to someone driving a car that, another way of signaling to a driver that you're approaching a pedestrian intersection. I don't know if you have to have more play and more room in those lanes to zigzag those center lines and the lane markings, but it seemed another very effective way at signaling that you're approaching a pedestrian intersection. I don't know if that's at all within the techniques and things that we can use in the United States to address pedestrian safety, but I'm guessing it's probably been effective in Europe where they've applied it.
Thanks. Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. While we're still on the subject of reducing speed limit, I too supported the reduction on Oakton to 25 miles an hour. Alderman Burris makes incredibly compelling argument for that. With regard to Central Street, I think this might be one of the best preventive measures we've ever taken. That section of Central Street has seen the increase of three restaurants, late hours, alcohol service, just huge influx of business at hours where it usually wasn't busy. So, I do really appreciate you including that in the plan. My second question, though, has to do with the temporary bumpouts in these, the illustration you showed had two vertical red plastic, I'm presuming, rods that came up. Have those been tested? Is there any information that would say these? What I'm worried about is a false sense of security, and I'm wondering what would accompany those in terms of signage, and have they really been tested?
So, I'm Mark Delavern with Sam Schwartz Engineering. We're a multimodal transportation engineering planning consultant. Our address is 505 North Listowel. So, the picture you had was from Hoboken, New Jersey. They've done a number of those, basically, same, for the same reason, you know, it's a low-cost temporary measure. You know, the actual treatment would be up to Public Works to come up with a full design treatment, you know, whether they end up being planters, bollards, somewhere in between. I mean, the good reason with the bollards is, as opposed to something like a planter, if a car hits it, it doesn't do anything. The main reason, it isn't for people to necessarily walk out into the street, but to improve the line of sight, you know, so that you don't have that car, because I mean, a lot of times what we have at intersections, cars squeezing as far as they can to the corner, and sometimes pushing it because we don't have signs and whatnot. Whereas this at least marks the space off, says it. It's not necessarily so that people just wait out there like we do with a physical curb extension, but to more improve the line of sight. And again, it's just a temporary measure. It's not necessarily to be a long-term to say, this is what we want to do, but to make that initial step before the funding can come in for the full curb extension.
Would there be any kind of signage that would accompany to let people know that this is to be observed, and this is what's coming permanently?
I thought I was supposed to go stand out there, too. That's exactly what I thought. Alderman Tendem?
We can, actually, one of our former employees is actually the person in Hoboken who installed that, so we can get some more information about resulting in the success.
I like the idea, because I'd like to get some of these, at least on Grant Street. Something happening very quickly, and I know that we don't, you know, the money isn't so quick to come, but, you know, I think that's a perfect place to consider it. So, thank you.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Suzette, I've got a couple of questions and then a comment. I continue to be just really perplexed about what we could do to improve pedestrian safety in the block between, on Benson, between Davis and Church, where we have buses lined up, we have semi-trailer trucks turning off Davis and heading down the street, we've got people double parked by the, next to the parking garage. It's just a real mess all the time, and I worry about people running from the L across the street, and I see this all the time. So, in the best world, in the most academic traffic safety planning world, not tonight, but I'd like to know what you and your staff would recommend to improve that section?
One-way.
One-week?
No, one-way, one-way. Making traffic one-way. On Benson, you said on Benson, between Church and Davis?
On Benson, between Church and Davis.
Sherman Garage, and that's?
I'd like you to think about it. I'd like you to think about it and take a look at it. I think there's been some effort to try to make things clearer for cars and buses turning, but I'm not sure that's helped, and taxis are a problem as well. My next question is about what is the thermoplastic material? It's not the stuff that you put down on Emerson that peeled right off, is it? Is that the thermoplastic? It doesn't last, though.
It's all about timing, meaning that when the thermoplastic is placed down, and I think that in that area, if it happens too late in the fall, it doesn't have an opportunity to adhere. And then we also are looking at the quality of the product that was applied, and I expressed that same concern, because the snowplow seemed to be able to remove it quite easily. And then I also had some concerns about how bright, it's the brightness, not just the wear pattern. So, the contract that we're recommending is actually the iDOT material, and that, we're piggybacking off a contract. piggybacking off a contract, and the lane markings that I've seen in Glenview, totally different than what we have been specing in terms of our projects.
And what's your expectation on a medium-traffic street? How long that would last?
It should last three to five years without a retouch.
My last question or comment that I wanted to make was, to me at least, no discussion of pedestrian safety can occur without talking about bikes on the sidewalk in the downtown. And what an incredible residential neighborhood this is and has become with shoppers and pedestrians and seniors, and now we're going to have a, a school for small children opening, and so we've got a lot of people, a lot of different ages in the downtown. I wanted to thank the police department for their incredible enforcement and your help in getting sidewalks marked and increasing public awareness. The problem that we have, I think, is endemic across the community, and that is that people feel that they are allowed to ride their bicycles on the sidewalk. And a certain amount of bicycle road rage occurs when you suggest to people that they're not allowed to do that. So I think, and we have to continue with our education program, with our Good Neighbor program, and thank you City Manager for helping with that. But we simply have to, I think with that, take a look at our new bike lanes and how we educate the public, especially families with children who feel most comfortable with having their children ride their bicycles on the sidewalk rather than in bike lanes. So I think we, this is something that we really need to follow up with and really need to be aware of, because people are getting hurt on the sidewalks and hurt badly. It's not just uneven sidewalks, it's people being hit by bicycles.
Thank you. Alderman Winn?
Yes, thank you very much for the report. I appreciate it. Suzette, my, I have just one very specific issue with respect to Lincoln School. I'd just like to make sure that we have as much notice as possible go out to the community, not only the school community, but the surrounding community, about the institution of the one-way in front of the school on Forest. I think it is the only solution to terrible problems similar to the one that Alderman Rainey was describing at Dawes. It's been happening at Lincoln for years. Parents double park, let their kid out of the car facing north so they can cross two lanes of traffic and run into school when they're late. So I think this is going to be a much, much, much safer entrance there. My next question is a macro one. What are the positives and negatives to lowering the speed limit throughout the city of Evanston to 25 miles per hour? And you don't have to give me an answer right now. I'd just like to know what would be the pros and cons of 25 miles an hour throughout the entire city?
Are you finished, Alderman Winn?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
I'd like to make a motion to establish a speed limit of 25 miles per hour on Oakton Street.
Second. We have to have an ordinance prepared, but we can try to do that. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think our hope was to come back on September 10th with all of the ordinances for the speed outchanges. If the council wishes to direct, otherwise that's fine. You have a meeting next week. It's really up to the council, but otherwise, we would be coming back on September 10th, and we'd be happy to have an ordinance for the Oakton. We have one already prepared, so we could bring that back on the 10th as well.
Don't you think we should vote on this? I mean, that's, there's a motion on the floor. Can we vote on it? Or are you going to decide?
Speed limits are set by ordinance. We do not have an ordinance, a motion could be to direct staff...
That's right.
...to return at a specific date with such ordinance if you'd like.
That was your motion, wasn't it, Alderman Rainey?
My motion. That's how we do it.
All right.
I'd like to amend the motion.
Alderman Fisk?
I'd like to amend the motion to do a citywide speed limit reduction to 25 miles an hour citywide.
Alderman Burris, do you accept it?
I will not accept it. I agree with it, but I think we need to keep it separate at this time, and I think we should have two different ordinances. Thank you.
All right. This is a motion to have an ordinance made, so we can do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And Madam Mayor, what would you like that ordinance?
I believe for the, is this September meeting early enough?
Sure.
All right. I'm sorry, Director Robinson?
If it, we would prefer, if we could bring it back on the 13th, we are going to be bringing some ordinances back, and the reason why is we want to get it established before school starts.
Right.
Excellent. Are you ready, City Manager? You've got the ordinance?
Certainly.
All right. All right, Alderman Braithwaite?
I'll be brief. Again, thank you very much for an excellent report. Personally, I'd like a follow-up with District 65, and if I can do anything to assist with that, I will. I will follow up with Alderman Rainey and Alderman Burris regarding Oakton School, and on that issue, I'm also interested in revisiting, so, the whole speed limit on Oakton. And also, just a general question, because there's some good information here, and there's some recommendations that you're making, and I guess what I'm looking for, maybe, I don't know if anyone else feels this way, I'd like to be able to communicate this to, at least to my residents in the ward. There are a couple of intersections that residents are concerned about, and I would like to be able to explain the reason for your recommendation. So if there's any way to provide a summary for those specific intersections in the ward that will help me communicate, I'd appreciate that, particularly the intersection on Main and where the childcare center is, I mean, Pittner, thank you. You gave me a very reasonable explanation, and I would like to be able to communicate that to the teachers and families at the childcare center, your reasons why. That's it.
Thank you very much, Director Robinson, for an excellent report, and congratulations on the accident numbers going down. That's terrific news.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, just so we're clear on process, you have one additional meeting in the month of August. As Ms. Robinson mentioned, will we have all the speed limit ordinances? Is that your plan, Ms. Robinson?
Yes, for, we're going to be requesting a suspension of the rules for action and for introduction and action.
So there are three streets. At this point, then, we will have three separate ordinances?
The three streets plus Forest and the stop sign issue, the one-way, the do-not-enter, and then the four-way stop.
Okay, so we will have that prepared, and it'll be on AMPW for next Monday?
Yes.
Okay. I counted roughly about a dozen other locations that the council asked for additional review. I don't believe that we will have that ready for next Monday. So all, so the next piece of this discussion, that would be just those ordinances, the speed limits, the stop sign, the do-not-enter, so that would be all that you would see on the 13th. Your meeting, next meeting after that is on September 10th. We'd like to propose that we would then come back with follow-up from the questions and issues that were raised this evening. Also, we will ask Representatives from District 65 to attend the meeting on the 10th, to be prepared to answer questions regarding several of the issues that have been raised this evening. So with that, Madam Mayor, I think from the discussion, if you take aside the items requiring an ordinance, those that require follow-up, I think it would be appropriate to have a motion to approve the other recommendations so that we can move forward to implement many of those that are required for the school year. So it asks that...
Well, you want an approval of participation in a joint contract for pavement marking, or...
We, I'd first like to end 3A with a motion to move forward with the other recommendations other than those I've just taken aside, the speed limits, the other things requiring ordinances, and then about the dozen or so locations that we'll come back to on September 10th.
All right. Alderman Winn?
Yes, I move that the city council direct staff to move forward with the recommendations in their report as described by the City Manager and as described in this report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Grover?
Mine is the next motion, perhaps?
All right. Alderman Rainey, did you want to speak to this motion?
Now, this is exactly why I put my light on, to move these items.
Thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Then, Madam Mayor, we'd ask your consideration for B, the approval of participation in a joint contract for pavement markings through the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative for Payment Marking Services. Participation in this contract will allow the city of Evanston to apply thermoplastic marking materials at various locations throughout the city in support of the pedestrian safety program. Participation in this contract would not exceed $75,000.
So moved. It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Rainey? I guess I'm just not used to having the City Manager read our motions, but that was interesting. I think this is one of the most important items before us tonight. If you drive around our city, you will notice that you can see virtually maybe 10% of all the markings, unless the street has just been paved last week or something. It is, it's awful. Our speed humps are not marked any longer, the crossings in neighborhoods are no longer marked, and if Alderman Fisk thinks the only place that bicycles on sidewalks are dangerous is in the downtown, she's very wrong. Bicycles all over town on sidewalks are dangerous, and I have asked for over a year to have markings on Howard Street where we have a bike lane and signs up, but I can't get the markings on the sidewalks. And I was called by Mark the other day, Matt, and asked, would I consider markings on the sidewalk? I said, yes, I certainly would. And so I'm wondering when that's going to happen, but these markings, they let people know that you either need to stop, all the markings for where you're supposed to stop at stop signs are gone. Suzette and I talked about this earlier in the year. It's just really, really terrible, and in some cases, even the center lines are not visible any longer. So I hope that this is going to be an intense citywide effort to mark pavement, and if anybody knows of pavement that needs marking that you think we're going to miss, call us up and let us know, because this is the most important thing on here, I think. Thank you. Seeing no further lights for discussion, it's been moved and seconded. Since it's a money item, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Winn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to zero, the motion passes. Alderman... Madam Mayor, could we have a little explanation of Item C?
I don't know. Do you want to move it, or do you want to...
I'll move it if we can get the discussion from our staff. Move approval of a single-source purchase of the LED solar-powered crossing warning signs for $56,000 from Tapco.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Director Robinson, would you like to speak to that? Is it just that sign that you showed us?
Yep.
With the yellow lights?
And it's triggered by a... That one.
And it's triggered by a touch?
Yes.
Don't you think we could get more signs? I think, I agree that that's a lot of money for that sign. What do the signs, the solar-powered speed signs cost per sign?
It is 10 of them, it's not just one.
No, I understand. Oh, God. I understand that. Don't the solar-powered speeds, speed signs cost like 5,000?
No, the solar-powered ones cost between 7,000 and 8,000.
7,000, 8,000, with the speed on it?
Right, right. The temporary ones that we purchased are about 5,000, but the solar version...
5,000, okay. And these are only, these have to be a sole source, right? Nobody else does.
Nobody else makes the size. The sign and the light and the technology is their own.
Yeah, all right. All right, I withdraw my concern. Alder, I'm sorry, Alderman Rainey, are you done? I am. Okay, thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you. Director Robinson, do you have an idea of where these 10 signs might go?
They would, they go at the uncontrolled school crossings, the designated school crossings. So every place where we have a school crossing where there is not a traffic signal or stop signs is where they would go.
Would it require two at each crossing, one for each incoming lane?
Yes, yeah, so that's five, five locations.
So only five locations?
No, it's 20, 10 locations, 20 signs.
All right. They come in pairs.
Because of sign system, yes, and that's, yes.
They come in pairs, thank you. That's even better.
Is it where, is it the state crossing sign where it says cross pedestrians?
It's the school crossing, it would be...
I know, but are there going to be any there of those?
Oh, the state crossing sign would still, the in-street sign would be located, and then the signs on the side of the road would be located. This is like, this is an advance warning, so it would be in advance of the stop for pedestrians.
Be like a warning.
Yes.
You're coming up.
Which is, I mean, I think what, it's similar to if you drive along Lake Street in Willmette and you see the big yellow flashing, and it just comes on during school, and I think even they are going to a, they actually have an LED display on a symbol similar to that, but it's not lighted, and only that, a little bar is lit. So it's not as visible, so that's why we decided that this would probably be a better option for us. And it's about the same price.
Alderman Grover?
No.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the single-source purchase of 10 LED solar-powered school crossing warning sign systems. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Winn?
Aye, and I think we should suggest to one of our new tech startups that here's a tech startup idea.
Good idea.
Please, I interrupt, roll call.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to zero, the motion passes. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.